I'm going to call to order the Lake Mills City Council meeting for February 16th, 2021. Could I get a roll call, please, Betsy?
Ms. Quidno? Here. Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
All present.
Get the microphone back on here. For those that can rise with me, please rise and we will say the pleasure of allegiance. Item four, correction and approval of the city council minutes of February 2nd, 2021. Do we have a motion of adoption as written or do we need any changes?
I move adoption of the minutes from the last council meeting.
Seconded.
Thank you. Did you get that, Betsy?
Yes, I did.
Okay, perfect. Let's go ahead and call the roll call vote.
Ms. Schmidt?
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Hi.
Mr. Fritsch?
Abstained.
Ms. Quidno?
Hi.
Motion passed.
Alright, thank you. Item five, correspondence. I will run down the list as I see folks here on the screen. Michelle, would you like to start with any correspondence?
Uh, I had plenty of correspondence about people who wanted to let me know who they support for opening council seats.
Okay. Thank you, Vicki. Would you like to go?
I probably had all of the same correspondence as someone who's running for council or being appointed.
Thank you. Mr. Fritsch, Doug, do you have anything?
Uh, pretty much the same thing.
Alright, thank you. And yeah, that was pretty much it for me. The same thing. Folks had a few folks make their recommendations of who they would like to see fill those empty seats. So if we get the number of people that have been recommended to me, we'll have a pretty darn good number of folks to select from and it may make our job even harder, so.
Indeed.
But that's okay. That's a good problem to have right now. Alright, item six, questions and public comment. Public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, which we don't have any public hearings tonight, you're asked to hold your comments till that hearing. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages actions by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address from starting your comments and fill out the sign in sheet if you're here in the office, or I'm sorry, here in the meeting room. For those attending online, if you want to speak, just please type your name and address into the chat feature. Let's go with the chat feature first and see if we have anybody that would like to make some comments.
Doug, could you mute your mic?
Can I?
Can you mute your mic?
Oh.
There you go.
Yep, that was it. Is there anybody here that would like to make any comments online? I see we have Lisa and Greg Waters, and I think that's it.
No, Steve Fields.
Oh, Steve Fields. There you are, Steve. How you doing, Steve? Okay, hearing nothing online. We'll go to the folks in the in the audience here. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in public? Other comments? No? Okay, with that, we will close public comments and we will move into the city manager's report. Mr. Wilk.
I provided you with the January budget, the January capital budget, the treasurers cash report for general fund, the general fund check register and utility check register and the police report. I also want to mention that today there was an election, so the city clerk and the deputy clerk are down working the election. So Betsy is filling in for us tonight. The one thing I also want to mention is that we're making, Dave and I have been working on technology upgrades in the council chambers. So you'll note that every one of the council seats has a wired plug-in for the internet. So if you come in, you will be able to plug in and not have to worry about the internet. We are upgrading the wireless in the room because we tend to get a lot of people in the room now who have multiple devices in their pocket that are hitting the internet. And then we're trying to figure out, once we have all the people in the council chambers and we still have people who want to participate virtually, how do you integrate those two? So Dave's working on switches and connections to be able to make that work. So we'll see where we head in the future, but those are some of the things that we hope to have in place. The plugins are actually in there right now. I think we'll have the wireless upgrade shortly. Of the, making sure that the live council meeting interties with the virtual connections is going to be a little bit more difficult and so that may take until April 1, maybe a little longer, but that's the route we're headed, so. Other than that, I don't have anything. Are there any questions?
No? Okay. The only other comment I'd like to make, Steve, is just let the the folks that are listening or on the TV or on the the virtual session here, that I have been working with Steve and our folks that run our, you know, our utilities, water plants to verify and make sure that we aren't susceptible to the same issues that occurred down in Florida where there was the potential of poisoning in the water. So a couple of things I can report right off the the top before we get finished with reviewing it is all the computers we have that are tied into this system are all updated. They all have their current antivirus and they all have their current patches on them. And our SCADA system is not used similar to the way that the SCADA system was used in Florida. So our chemical testing and our chemical additions into our water treatment plant is done manually and we actually take readings at the different wells almost every single day to make sure that our settings are correct. So we don't have the same risks that the small city in Florida had when they were hacked and they tried to raise the chemical levels to a level that would poison people. So at this point, we can breathe easy on that piece and there'll just be some more to follow up in the in the next future meetings, but just so you know, we've done some some due diligence and checking on this to make sure that we aren't susceptible to that. Okay, unless there's anything else for Steve, I'm going to move on. We go to item eight, which is acceptance of the minutes from the Joint Rock Lake Committee of yes?
Mike? Um. Has there been any discussion from WPI about any problems that we might have, like Texas is currently having with the electric grid?
Yeah, the big thing is with ours, we're, our our systems are set up to handle the colder weather first and foremost. They're built for the cold weather, whereas the stuff in Texas wasn't built for the cold weather. So even if we relied more on wind or solar or things like that, our systems actually operate a lot better than the systems down in Texas. So, but Steve, go ahead if you got anything else.
We we run multiple, we try and keep a very diverse portfolio of power. So having the power connections is not a real issue for us and in fact, we could shift from one power source to another power source relatively quickly. The weakest one being coal, but we do have two coal plants, one nuclear plant. We have multiple natural gas facilities and then we have a lot of solar and wind. So yeah, we're we're pretty well connected. Probably one of the bigger issues is the distribution, the transmission and distribution systems that bring power in and and distribute it through the neighborhoods. A lot of times they're very susceptible to the cold if they're not maintained properly, but you know, you were on the public works boards. It's 2000, we've upgraded almost every single fixture in the in the city of Lake Mills and and actually in our electric area. So we should not be substantially susceptible. We may have a fuse blow here or there, but we're not going to lose a lot of power. Since 2000, we've improved our reliability from like 80% up to about 99.6. So it's just not an issue for us anymore.
Good to hear. Thanks, Doug. Thanks for that question. Is there anything else? If not, I'm going to move on to item eight again. Alright, item eight, acceptance of the minutes from the Joint Rock Lake Committee of January 5th, 2021. If you haven't read it, there's some good, interesting stuff in there. And we'll have a little bit of a conversation later on about some of these reports from some of these committees, but that will go on record as written. Item nine, council business miscellaneous licenses. The first one is secondhand jewelry dealer license for countryside jewelry. This is one of those housekeeping things that we do every single year to provide that license for countryside jewelry. It shows that we as a community have done our part and and the police have done their part to make sure that secondhand jewelry, pawning and stuff like that is not a problem as far as crime in our community. So that's what this is for. We have ordinances that have have required us to make sure we have a motion of adoption to hand out these licenses every year. And right now the only one we have is for countryside jewelry. So unless there's any questions, I would accept a motion of adoption to provide the secondhand jewelry license to countryside jewelry.
I move to provide the license to the secondhand jewelry license to countryside jewelry.
Alright, we'll take Michelle's. Would you like to second, Doug?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so Doug's the second, Michelle's the, made the motion. Is there any conversation that you'd like to have or discussion on this point before we call the vote? Okay, Betsy, please call the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Hi.
Mr. Fritsch?
Hi.
Ms. Quidno?
Hi.
Ms. Schmidt?
Hi.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item B, discussion decision on use of the $5,000 donation accepted by the city on January 19th, 2021. I need a refresher again, Steve. What did we?
It was discussed that we would bring it back and have a discussion about where we wanted to put this money in the future. I'd originally looked at the library and diamond fund. Diane was talking about setting it aside for band shelter and she wanted some information on that. Did talk to Rob. Rob said that the band shelter wouldn't be a, I mean, that it's been all updated and doesn't really have any need for any funds shortly. We also talked about a meeting that you and I had last Thursday and he suggested that we combine that with that grant and look at doing the things in the commons such as redoing the Veterans Memorial and the walkways around it. And I thought that was a good idea, but you know, at this point in time, I would prefer to wait on this conversation and let's work through the priorities as we try and put something together for that grant.
Okay.
Steve, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um.
That's what you're here for.
Yeah, I know, I know. I just wanted to be polite about it. I wanted to clarify regarding the band shelter, not band shelter, the gazebo in the Commons Park. I I have heard from constituents, there's been some concern and perhaps this is ahead of the game, but there's been some concern with a lack of like a wheelchair ramp or some kind of ramp to allow for people who may not be able to go up and down stairs for accessibility and wondering if part of that could go toward building like a back a back way onto the onto the gazebo in that way.
Um, yeah, we could do that. Probably would look at it as part of the transition and the accesses. If you I don't know, have you had time yet to read the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan?
No, I have not. Thank you very much for for enlightening me that I need, I have this, I'll add that to my docket.
Yeah, so uh we'll probably sit down and go over some of those things with you because there's a lot of information. I have 20 years of these people providing me with reports that are hundreds of pages long. And so I have a lot of background information that probably isn't there, but there there is a report that the Parks Board put out that looks at redoing Commons Park in certain ways. And they're looking at making it more friendly for the farmers market, making it easier to maintain the Veterans Memorial, putting in some other walkways, expanding the ice skating rink, upgrading the warming house. And so we could kind of tie, they also were looking at having a drive access to the gazebo too. Because a lot of the bands that participate want to back up, unload their stuff and then get out and Rob does not appreciate them driving over his grass or his tree roots. You have anything you want to add to that, Rob?
The other item was handicap accessibility for watching events up at the band shelter. Currently, people have to go on the grass with wheelchairs. There's designs for handicap wheelchair, you know, platforms for them to sit, at least in the audience, things like that. So, you know, I can get together that with those plans and get them to everybody if they like them.
We're going to probably need them at some point in time. Why don't you give us until after the first meeting in March before you send them out so that we have a, you know, at least three people, maybe four that are, I think four people then that will be able to send the information to that will be that round long enough to to have the conversation. But yeah, it's important. We, in order, we have a Watertown Hospital Foundation has offered us $100,000 for grant. And all we have to do is submit a priority to them on how we want to use it, then they will write a check. So we thought we'd combine that with this and we would be able to put something together in the in the commons. That was pretty substantial without having to 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 hit any substantial funding programs.
Okay, I, and I, we have a Parks Board meeting tomorrow. So if there's any questions on that, maybe Rob and I can talk. Thank you for.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is the staff would like us to table this until a future date.
Yep, I would really appreciate that.
Alright, with with that being said, would anybody care to make that motion to table this?
So moved, Doug.
Thank you, Doug. It's moved to table this to a later date. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Quidno. Go ahead and call, we'll call vote, Betsy.
Mr. Fritsch?
Hi.
Ms. Quidno?
Hi.
Ms. Schmidt?
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Hi.
Motion passed.
Thank you. That item is tabled. Let's see here. Item C. Discussion decision on requiring reports to city council by council members appointed to board commissions on said board commission meeting minutes, recommendations and actions. Okay, that's a, that's a mouthful there. So what we have done in the past is with these boards and commissions, you know, obviously, one of the city council members has to be on each of the different select boards and commissions. And as items come up for roll call votes at the council level, that's normally when that council person would speak on behalf of it. My concern is that we may be missing some things if you aren't fully engaged in looking at all the meeting minutes or watching the videos or whatever the case is. And we may miss something that is important to that that council member that is part of that that board or commission. And right now, we don't have a great way of getting that information to the other city council members due to the fact that any of these conversations have to be in public hearing or in a public meeting. So this was my recommendation that when we get to the point of accepting those minutes, so the minutes have been approved by the by that border committee and they come to us to put on record, I would recommend that that period of time right there, we would allow for any comments to be made by that that council person if things pop up that need to be discussed before it come, you know, some things never come up for a vote. So we may never know what is important and what you think is important and information from that meeting is important unless you get a chance to speak about it. So basically, that's what I'm trying to do. Trying to figure out, is there a place in our agenda once the meeting minutes have been approved by that council for the sitting council member to give their their synopsis to the rest of the council? And I'm making the assumption Vicki might have something good to say about this or bad, but I'm hoping she has something to say.
Well, I'm not exactly sure how you're going to work that out because the public won't know just because the meeting minutes are being accepted and placed and filed by the council. I'm not sure the public will have adequate notice that there's going to be a report given, but I don't think it would be that hard to have an additional agenda item right under accepting the meeting minutes from those boards and commissions that could say something like council representatives on boards where the meeting minutes have just been accepted may give a report. So then it's not required, but then it gives notice to the public that there might be such a discussion. That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, and that's very similar to what I was thinking. Obviously, didn't get it out clear enough. But that's what I was thinking, having something right underneath there that gives the council member an opportunity to make some comments on it. But it would be noticed and it would be noticed in the paper, it'd be an agenda item and it would give them a chance to speak on something that in the past I don't think we've ever had that type of opportunity.
Only when we've asked particular boards, I think that the council has asked the Rock Lake Board. And I think sometimes it might have also been the Park Board to come and give a report to the council, but but it's it's not tied with when we receive their minutes. It's it's just a random other report. It might be quarterly or once a year or whatever, but if you have a generic comment on on your agendas that gives enough notice that there may be a report from council representatives for the minutes that are being accepted, then it doesn't put the requirement right out there that there has to be a report, but then if there's something noteworthy that gives them an opportunity to bring it up so that council members who may not have read the minutes or may not have understood them would then be apprised about what happened at that meeting that might be of note to the council just so that they're kind of put on notice that something happened.
Yeah, and that's one of the main purposes of it because obviously minutes are that small little synopsis and if if you're at a, say Parks Board, it's not televised or not recorded, then it's kind of hard to figure out sometimes what do they really mean by that. So thanks for that that input. Mr. Gresher, I'd like to also hear from you because we talked a little bit about this, but I'd like to get your two cents worth on it.
That sounds like a fine solution. I would identify the board that may be under discussion just to clarify a little bit. But that seems like a fine way to approach it.
Okay, thank you. And it makes sense to me. I mean, we, it it wouldn't be just a I wouldn't expect it to be a carte blanche, you know, anybody from any of these can report, but yeah, I could see where we would have to say say we had the the Parks Board minutes and the public work minutes, we would make an item below that that says I don't know, potential council member discussion on I don't know, we can work that wording out as we talk through it. Does anybody else have any other information they want to share on this?
I've been through this conversation quite a bit. And a report is different than a conversation if my memory serves me right. If it's a report that just brings information to the table, a conversation then takes, raises that to the next level and then I think you would have to go to the point where you would list in the report what was, what specific item from that council member was going to be discussed. So you have to kind of be careful in how you how you structure that and even if it is a report, I know historically from having given a lot of reports that people like to discuss them. And so it it kind of I get where you're going. I like the idea. Kind of captures some things that slide by us, but it has to be managed appropriately, I think, and understanding what a report is different than a discussion is going to be important.
Would there be an opportunity for like clarification on any questions? Would that be not a discussion, but instead and a chance for any council members to ask questions regarding the the minutes?
Yeah, that would put us in the conversation then, correct, Steve?
Yeah, that would be a discussion item.
What I would do what I would do is, once the report's done, one of the other council members or the council member giving the report can say, we should have this on an agenda. And then the next agenda, we could have it on and then we could have the full discussion. Everybody would all the public would have the o- opportunity to participate in that conversation. If you say it's a report on some minutes and nobody is quite sure what it's going to be, and then all of a sudden you have a lengthy conversation about an important topic to somebody and you make a decision and we're gone, they're going to feel like they were excluded from the opportunity to participate in the conversation. And that's, that is not my strong point. I've been beat up by a city attorney over that for 20 years now. And, and she's sitting in this meeting.
We're not going to mention any names, right?
Yeah, so, um, but I, I understand the argument. I understand the logic. I, I get the report. I also get, once you head into the discussion, there are going to be a lot of people in the public who are going to want to participate in that, especially if for some reason you come out of that meeting with a, okay, this is where we're headed. And it never goes to any other thing other than gets sent down maybe to the director of Parks and he's all of a sudden building something that nobody else knew about.
So it would be better to say, um, something like the agenda item would be reports on approved minutes or something to that line? Or would we have to actually change it every single time and say, this is a, just a report on, um, Public Works and, uh, Plan Commission? And then we would know that we would not have to, we would not take any conversation. We would say, okay, there's conversation we want to have on that. And then we would ask that to be put on an agenda. And that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I think what Vicki is saying is have it say, um, council member, Parks representative from, or council member that's Parks representative may have a report and do all those. And if they don't have a report, we don't have to do anything. If they do, we can have that conversation. If, or that report. If that report leads to someone wanting to have a conversation, they should say, we want this on the next agenda.
Sounds good. Okay, so if we are going to do this and we're going to try this out, um, would somebody want to make a motion that we add that language to an agenda item? Or do we even need to go that far? Can we just say, okay, agenda item, blah, 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 is now going to be this once we, once we get to building that agenda for that, for that meeting?
Our charter specifies some items that have to be on the agenda. Does it exclude items? That's a Dan question. I'm not going to try and answer that. But I would think that just having a motion isn't going to hurt anything. Because then it,
Okay.
it covers our requirements. And then if, if we do have to come back and, and amend an ordinance, Dan can work with us with you on that and get it done.
Okay. So with that being said, would anybody be willing to make a motion to add the report as a, uh, required agenda item that will show up on future agendas? And I guess since I've been the one talking about it, I don't see why I can't make that motion. So I will go ahead and make the motion and ask if there's a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Quidno. Is there any other conversation around this item? Okay, with that being said, we will get ready to call the roll call vote here in a second, but I, uh, this is one of those items that if it doesn't work out and it's really just a, a, a pain, um, it's something that we can look at again in the future and see if it is really truly required. Uh, I, I just, it popped up in my head a few weeks ago when Ms. Quidno wanted to make some conversation about some meeting minutes. And I thought to myself, we really don't have a great way of doing this. And what, what can we do to do, to make this happen? So this is the solution I came up with. So with that being said, Betsy, please call a roll call vote.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Betsy. Uh, okay, last item, well, last item of council business, item D. Uh, presentation on upcoming census redistricting. So everybody knows that the census occurred and we are supposed to get our reports by the first of April. Um, so this only occurs once every 10 years. And I asked Mr. Wilkie to put together some stuff for us to put a presentation out there on what we can expect uh, after April or whenever we do get the census report, which right now is, it's truly up in the air. The census boards uh, came back and said they are not sure when they're going to get them out. But when they do, I wanted to make sure everybody here was aware of what processes will happen for us. So I think the floor is yours, Steve, right?
Here, I'm Neil, Steve.
Nickel. It's a nickel. Uh, yeah, every 10 years. This is my fourth one. Uh, so it gives you an idea how long I've been around. Uh, the, it's gotten a lot easier. Computers have made this a much easier process. The first one was Tiger. Now we're on something else. But, uh, what you're trying to do is make sure that you got one person, one vote. And you're trying to make sure that they're in the appropriate district, voting for the appropriate person in the appropriate place. So there are wards in cities and districts and they have to be divided up.
Hey, Steve?
Yes.
Would you like to share that presentation?
Oh, yeah, I bet it. Wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, a few people might want to see it.
Okay, let's see here. Come on, it's not here. Let me try this again. Can you see it now?
Yep.
Yep, it's, yeah.
Still should come up for everybody. Do you all see it?
Yes.
All right. So local redistricting in Wisconsin, now there are several different types. There's a legislative, there's local. Um, the state has to divide theirs up for, um, their elected leg- state legislators. Uh, we have to divide ours up for council members. Uh, so what happens is, is that historically, on April 1st of the year after the census, which this year would have been April 1st, 2021, uh, the Census Department was supposed to deliver to the state of Wisconsin the data that would then be delivered to the cities. And they would do that through this wise decade with seller package that would help us figure out what was going on. And we would be able to then create new ward boundaries. Um, I don't think that's going to happen. From what I read the other day, they're hoping that they can get it out by September 1st, which would make it really difficult because if you look at what happens, um, historically, on April 1st, it's delivered and the counties create a tentative supervisory plan. And then after they've created that supervisory plan on June 1st, they allow the municipalities to start working on it. They give their information to us and then we start working on ours. And that's because ours has to fall within theirs. So our boundaries on certain categories have to match. So once they've made theirs and they deliver it to us, we then have to take what they've given us and make our wards and districts work for those. Uh, and then same with the state. The state then has delivered it to the counties. The counties have to make theirs work for that. So it's kind of a three-tiered approach. Anyways, then we have 60 days to complete the process uh, that we deliver back to the county and the county finalizes their plans. Um, we have used wards and then created districts. Because of the way our election process works, we have, um, one elected at large and then two from districts rather than one from a ward. Um, because we had to divide up into eight wards. Uh, could have probably done it a little bit different, but that just worked easier from the way that the, um, council has their elections done. You have two from, uh, District 1 and two from District 2 and then one at large. The city clerk is the one that actually does all this work. Um, I don't know if you remember Jim Heilman, but he was quite bald from this process. Uh, he spent a lot of time pulling his hair out. I heard him swear more during this process than any other time in his life. Uh, there is a lot of numbers crunching and trying to make it match. Um, nothing ends up being perfect. Um, and now they're, I don't ever remember them having special training for it, but I, they must have. But now they have it here available unlisted. Um, let me flip to the other one here. The census is just a slice in time. There's probably only one day where the population in Lake Mills is going to match what the census said. Uh, we've added a lot of new houses, a lot of new apartments. Uh, we've annexed territory. Um, so our boundaries have changed. Our population numbers have changed, I'm sure, from the date that that started. So you're yet actually using information that's probably over a year old by the time we get it. And so making sure that it's going to be exact is, is not really the requirement. Um, but we have to create wards. That's the law. Um, they have to be com- compromise comprised of whole census blocks. Um, and it goes into how census blocks are done. They talk about how the annexations are considered. So you know, when we do an annexation from one of the towns, one of the things that's in that annexation ordinance is what ward those people are going to vote in or that land that we just annexed is going to be included in. Talks about, um, cities from 1,000 to 9,000, ward population range will be 300 to 1,000. That's a little bit of an interesting tidbit. Um, you can't change ward boundaries or it's very difficult to change ward boundaries between censuses. Um, see if there's anything else in there that. Hopefully, once we're done, it's the last time we'll have to look at it until 2031. But it's a process that, um, once it's done and you pass your ordinances related to it, it's generally something that you don't have to worry about. And again, for the next 10 years, ward sizes will have changed dramatically. Uh, they're not really going to be reflected in the wards because the only, probably only one day somewhere in 2020 where that word is actually representative of what occurred. So other than that, it's, it's a pretty much a legislated, one of those things where the city does what the state tells us. Kind of like, uh, the other item we already dealt with tonight, which was, uh, secondhand jewelry. That's another state statute where they tell us what we're going to do. Kind of same as weights and measures. Pretty much like everything. They tell us what to do and we jump through the hoops.
Yep, that's correct. Thanks, Steve. So, yeah, there was a couple of reasons I wanted this first and foremost is, um, I, I just wanted to make sure that everybody in the community knew that there was something going on. So if you see any ordinance or, uh, uh, any, um, uh, whatever you call it, that, that the city council has to sign, um, about the census stuff, it's all pertaining to this. And the second thing is that I know that we're going to have a lot of new council members here very soon. And I know a bunch of those folks are online. And I knew they were going to be online or here in the audience. So I wanted to make sure that they knew, um, there are some things that will, uh, be right in front of them almost right away when they get here and hit the ground running. So was there anything? Go ahead.
Yes.
Um, are you at all concerned about the timeline, given the fact that there's going to be such a crunch?
Uh, I don't really think it impacts the city very much because our elections won't occur until next April. So it's, the one that you really have to be wondering about is if there are any elections next November that are legislative in nature. Um, state representatives, so let's say 13th district, uh, senator or, um, superintendent, state superintendent of schools, that could clearly impact that election. Uh, obviously.
You talking 2022 in that?
Um,
because 2021 shouldn't be a 13th. They shouldn't have one because that was electionish last year.
No, uh, Scott, Scott got elected to the federal government. And so his seat is now open. So if you go down and vote tonight.
Yeah, you're right.
So, um, I don't know when that election it actually is, if that'll be in April, because that's a special election.
Yeah.
So it might be in April. And I don't know about the state superintendent of schools. It might be in April too, because that's an oddball one.
Yeah, it's April.
That's in April.
So it's a, but if there were an election that in th- this fall, they're supposed to be ready to go um, based on the numbers that are presented in April. But because they're being presented so late, I don't think there will be. But I, right off the top of my head, I don't think there's any uh, state elections that'll be occurring this fall for us. So I don't, I don't think it'll have any significant impact on us, may, and other areas, but not us.
Okay.
I, I think, I also think that, um, um, the redistricting at the state level is, is going to be different because I, um, you know, now that you have a, a little bit of a split, you know, and, and 2011, it was both houses were Republican and the governor was Republican. You may have some vetoes on the redistricting for the, for the state and then you don't know how long it'll take for that to work out. So
Yeah.
we could be in for a long wait. But as far as locally, I think we'll be fine.
Well, that was, my question was, uh, back when we redistricted in 2011, the germanding and the fight that we had at that, at the state level. So you're thinking that there won't be that much of a problem for us locally?
No, it di- didn't happen the last time. Of course, I don't ever remember redistricting being that smooth as, uh, what happened in 2011. Even in 2001, it, it was more of a controversy and, and, uh, definitely in 1990. So, so, um, um, this, this one I imagine will be a little bit more controversial than 2011. That one was a pretty smooth one. But again, for us, once, if we get the numbers and we can get them processed in time, we should be fine for the April election.
All right. If there's nothing else, that moves us on to uh, recommendations for future agendas. And we already know what's coming up. recommendations for future agendas. And we already know what's coming up. We have the special session next week at 5:00 PM. And then as soon as that's over with, we move into the Plan Commission after that. So it's it's mainly for recommendation or I'm sorry, recognition for Diane and for the vote for her replacement starting at 5:00 PM. Did Steve, did we, I don't remember if we let Sarah know what's happening on the 23rd. Will she will she be here in person?
I don't know. I haven't talked to Sarah about that.
I've spoken. I've spoken with her and she intends to be here.
Okay, perfect. I won't call her then.
The there probably, you know, we had a couple of items that I was looking at doing tonight that I decided to hold off on probably until the second meeting in March. Maybe even longer. Another item probably that we should have a conversation on is a orientation meeting. Study session where we can sit down and go over some items that on process and the procedure and the way things work. And then also some history of where to find things.
Right.
You know, I know we're all, well, I've got all the reports here on my desk, all 7,000 of them. But not everybody knows that or has that type of information and what to look for. So we'll probably try and set something up like that.
Got a question. Will the 23rd, the special council session, will that be televised?
Yes.
Okay, can out of state, I can't recall. Can out of state people pick that up?
Well, we're also going to try to blend in the eight by eight meeting. So folks that can't pick it up on the TV should be able to join this virtual meeting because this virtual meeting should also be going at the same time. And that's one of the things Steve was mentioning that he and Dave have been working on to blend all that together. So that way you can watch on TV or you can watch it virtually like this.
You can also go to YouTube.
That's true.
Because Dave Dave feeds to YouTube right away.
Yep, that's true. And YouTube might be better than trying to join this meeting.
All right. Historically, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome, Doug. Okay. If there's nothing else, we stand adjourned until next Tuesday at 5:00 PM. Thank you, everybody.